Good evening, this is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting. Call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So any of you had a chance to take role?
I have taken role. Everyone is present, you have the floor.
Thank you. We'll move on to public hearings and personal appearances. First item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing to receive public comments of proposed tax amendments to municipal code chapter 405 zoning regulations to increase minimum residential densities, allow flexibility by expanding land uses in the commercial and industrial zoning districts, and create an overlay district in the downtown area. If you wish to speak for or against the proposed tax amendments to the municipal code chapter 405 zoning regulation, we'll have you come forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and then you will have the opportunity to speak. Floor is open for public comments and inputs? Input? Looks like we have nobody online. See nobody move here, I will close the floor. We'll move on to the next item under public hearing and personal appearances. We have the Carney High School Botany presentation, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Eric Marshall, our Parks and Rec Director, who will introduce our group.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Alderman members. Ryan and I were really fortunate, earlier this year at the beginning of the school year, Caitlin with the Botany class emailed and asked if they can do a project for Jesse James Park. Absolutely. I visited with Ryan about this, and we always recognize a lot of high school athletics and different things of that nature. And after they did their project, they invited us out to the high school, listened to their presentation. They had two groups doing a presentation, and that's when I asked if they would be interested in coming in and giving the same presentation, combining it into one, and they were thrilled about doing that. And I think we have some parents in here, so without further ado, I'm going to turn the role over to Caitlin and come up and introduce your students.
Thank you.
All right. So, like you said, my name is Caitlin Fountain, this is my seventh year teaching at Carney High School. This is my third year working with Client Connection Projects. And just to kind of give you a background with Client Connection Projects, students work with outside professionals outside the school during these. Their job is to solve a problem or come up with a product for a client. And truly, it becomes student-driven. I essentially say, here's your client, after reaching out to them, and they pretty simply say yes. I say, here's your client, now your job is to come up with a solution to a possible problem they have, or come up with a product. And from there on out, the students absolutely take over. It is their job to contact the client, it's their job to come up with a product. I don't give them a rubric. I just say, here's your objectives, show me how you meet them, which really opens the door for student creativity, and it really allows our students to capitalize on their specific interests and, you know, their specific skill sets that they have. And these students, they worked with the Jesse James Park to come up with an educational walk, so plaques for trees. They came by, the group come up with a website for Jesse James Park that people who visited can scan a QR code and have a variety of trees named, identified, and become an educational walk for everybody. We recognize that there might not be funds for that currently right now, but they came up with different fundraising opportunities that the park could use in the future to raise funds, to create an educational walk for the community. And with that, I'll go ahead and introduce my students that'll come up. A few of them couldn't be here, but they all put in a lot of work through the entire semester for this. Britta Nielsen, Braylon Stevel, Tessa Tree, Sloan Glenn, Devin McHewie, Sienna Stroh, Rice Womack, and Elizabeth Barrett. So I'm going to have them come up, and they will present their presentation to you.
Ryan, are you ready?
Yes, sir, we're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, you can go ahead and turn your next slide face. All righty, good evening, we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves. I'll start. I'm Britta Nielsen, I am the designer, presenter, and leader on this project.
I'm Tessa Tree, I'm the Quality Assurance Manager and the accountant.
Hi, I'm Sienna Stroh, I am the designer and communicator.
I'm Rice Womack, I'm the accountant, sign of record keeper, and the leader.
My name is Devin McHewie, and I was part of the earlier team that collected data, and I will be one of the presenters presenting today.
And then Braylon was our communicator and presenter, but she couldn't be here today. And then Elizabeth was our Quality Assurance Manager, and she also did not be here today.
Our mission and vision, so our mission was to build a website for Jesse James Park, including a virtual tour of its trees and trails to educate hikers, and also to design fundraising opportunities to fund our plaques. Our vision was to make a complete website for the Jesse James Park to use. Eventually, there'll be plaques at each trail that have a website and QR code to educate and guide visitors through all trails.
So, on the topic of fundraising, we knew that the Jesse James Park, or at least they communicated to us, that they had limited funding for this project. So one of the things we brainstormed for quite a long time during our initial project was how the park itself could raise money for the plaques themselves. And we thought of many things, but one of the major things we thought of that would start off the fundraising opportunities for the park itself is getting an initial donation from many local companies. Mojos County House, the, Mojos Coffee House, the Carney Trust Company, and State Farm, all of those are local businesses that have donated in the past. Carney Trust in specific recently sponsored the Carney Turkey Truck and donated about $500 to it. State Farm donated 250 themselves, and we were also trying to find an agent that you would be able to contact at State Farm. Her name is Stella Spiking, and she would be able to help you on that front. Other options with local companies that might be able to help are Beas Flower Shop, Mojos, as we discussed, Price Chopper, and Papa Murphy's. They, we've looked into them, they have also donated to various fundraisers in the past.
Next slide, please.
For the plaque, the typical pricing for an engraved plaque would be around $100 to $5. You can choose what you wanted to put on it, and you would put the QR code so that people that went to the park could see in it. And then below, we have the link to the website that sells the plaques that you could engrave with whatever you want. Slide please.
So for the plaque, the design of the plaque, we, we decided to try to find a way to kind of have it to where it'd be kind of simple, so it wouldn't be as expensive, but also another way. But this ain't, also a final design of if you guys wanted to change anything or have anything different on it, you guys can't, it ain't totally final. For the first part, we have this for like a QR code. If it just needs a general QR code, it'll just, you know, QR code and have the plaque on there, so people can just scan it and have, go to their website, they can recreate it and all that. The second option we got would be a, kind of with the actual species of the plant or any trees on the hike with the little info on it.
All right, so this is a little bit about the website itself, so if you want to go ahead, could you please click on the link for the website below the QR code? And then if you guys would like, go ahead and scan the QR code we handed out to you with your phones. It'll take you directly to the website, it is active. You guys can follow along with me as we go through it. So like we said earlier, the general idea of this whole thing is to have QR codes at each trail that you can scan to follow along as we walk through. So once you open it up, you'll start at our homepage, it says adventure starts here. That first link you see that says click here for the tour, you're welcome to go ahead and click on that. It'll take you directly to the virtual trail tour. Little bit about educational walks through this first part, who planted the trees, and then some general tree information to click through, and it tells you where to start. Once you reach the very bottom of that page, you'll see two options, the horseshoe annex comments and the main loop. Once you like to, gosh, excuse me, if you would like to, go ahead and click on the main loop. And this will take you on the start of your tree tour through that first loop on the trail. Would you please go ahead and click back on the homepage? Once you're here, you can scroll down, and you can see the professional trail maintenance, beautiful trails, and lifelong memories. Go ahead and click on the learn more, please. Once you reach this, this is a little bit about Jesse James Park in general, a little about its history and the features of the park itself. Would you please go back to the homepage? All right, if you scroll down a little further, you can see here from our explorers, this are real-life reviews that we found from Yelp about the park, and tell you a little about the park from different people's perspectives. If you scroll down even further, you can see JJ Park News, Jesse James Park. This is where we included stuff about the fundraiser opportunities that they have come up with. These are flyers that they designed and potential dates for things if you guys would like. And you can click on that, and the beauty of this is that you can actively update this website from your phone. So from whoever is going to control this website after us, you can change it. It boasts active updates, and you can do things like fundraisers, trail maintenance, other stuff happening in the park, like concerts. And then if you go back to the homepage, scroll down to the very bottom, and we have a little fun, share your JJ Park moments, it's a hashtag people can use to hashtag the park and share their posts with you online. And then if you go up to your top right on that little toolbar, you'll see contact, you can click on that, and it has a pin to the Jesse James Park on the map that you can click on, it's both contact information. That's all about the website, so if you'd like to, please go ahead and go back to that slideshow.
Some of the advantages of using our website is it's easily accessible, it's cost-efficient, and it's easy to update whenever you would like.
Thank you for your time today. Do you guys have any questions? And when you go to that next slide, it has our sources for information about the park.
Any questions from the board, representatives?
It's impressive, the website.
Eric, so what's, sorry, go ahead. What would be your total cost estimate to implement the website? Then how many plaques do you think would be necessary to start the project with?
I mean, probably just two plaques, that's kind of how we have it set up right now, just the two main trails, the main loop as well as the horseshoe annex comments, but from there it can be developed. The website is free to use. It's through the Lix website design, so I just used a blank template and created the whole website for free.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, all for your, your word, and you've done a phenomenal job here, and look forward to hopefully seeing some new plaques in our parks soon.
Listen, kids, thank you so very much for reaching out to us at the very beginning of the school year and taking this project on. Ryan, if you'd like to say something, we had a, we had a great time interacting with you, and as I told Caitlin, you guys were always in contact with us, so they stayed up on their, on their work like they were supposed to, so hopefully you made a man, right? You gotta get that very changed.
What a, what a good opportunity. Just you guys have once again shown that you don't have to be of legal voting age to make a difference in your community, so I, I know your group, Stacy and Caitlin do a lot of good things in the communities and real-life projects, and this is just one small example. So Ryan, I'm sorry, I think I cut you off, bud, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I did, that's okay. I'd just like to add that initially, when we met with these groups, it was two separate projects, and Eric and I listened to both their presentations, and, you know, when it came back to the feedback time, we said, well, we like this about the first project, we like this about the second project, what do you guys think about working together? And that's not initially what they set out to do, so we kind of threw them a curveball, and they handled it just absolutely admirably. You guys did a fantastic job, and kudos to you.
Eric, I've got a question. I know it's probably too short of the notice, but I know we have a park board, Park and Tree Board Thursday. Would it be possible to, to have this presentation at one of our park board meetings?
Sure.
Might not be this week, but...
Would you want these students to come out?
Absolutely, I think, I think that'd be a great opportunity. Might not be this Thursday.
Thank you very much for being here, and excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda this evening is our open public comments. Is there anybody in the audience that would wish to address the board under the open public comments section? Seeing nobody move, I will move on to the next item. You guys are welcome to stay for the entirety of the meeting, but if you'd like to excuse yourself, now would be the perfect time to do so.
Good idea, guys.
Next item is a consent agenda. Does anybody on the board have any questions or any discussion items on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Said move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes as presented. We'll move on to ordinances. The first ordinance this evening is a motion approving bill number 2, 2025, presented by Stephanie Harris, our Finance Director. An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Carney, Missouri fiscal year 2025 adopted city budget. That's obviously our budget that's ending this April. Stephanie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, all Aldermen. The ordinance before you is being proposed in order to comply with Missouri law to ensure the city does not spend more than has been budgeted. This is one of two standard budget amendments that are approved annually and ensures that the city's final budget includes all expenses that are incurred. Although the entire staff is encouraged to submit input during the city's annual budget process, and some spend a great deal of time trying to forecast the future, the city is no different than any household in that there are various expenses that the board has approved throughout this fiscal year today that were not originally anticipated 12 months ago when our budget was being drafted and approved. This ordinance includes budget amendments for significant vacation time payouts that are mandated by our employee handbook for employees who separated from the city during the year. Transfers required to reconcile administrative charges, expenses the board authorized related to legal cases and contractor work, additional costs related to the new trash and recycling contract, the required city match for rent awards that the board has accepted, and contractually obligated to costs. And if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to address them, but thank you for your consideration.
Thanks for that report. Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, if we can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Carney, Missouri fiscal year 2025 adopted city budget.
Make a motion to approve a first read.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the City of Carney, Missouri fiscal year 2025 adopted city budget.
Move to approve on second reading.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, votes unanimous. We'll move on to the next item this evening, a motion approving bill number 3, 2025, presented by Chief Mark Thomas. An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri imposing a sales tax for the purpose of improving public safety at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to section 94903 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri, providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Carney, Missouri for their approval on our municipal election on April 8, 2025, designating the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide the notice of said election. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Alderman. I, this is what we presented at the last meeting, our presentation. Several of the details involved with this, this motion are really important to point out in my mind. It's a definite need, I think we demonstrated that at our last meeting very clearly. But the, some of the details that we want to also touch on is that the retailers would not begin collecting this tax until October the 1st, 2025, we're looking at an April ballot. The, the question of who will pay for the sales tax, it's everyone who shops in Carney, both residents and non-residents who rely on public safety, mother in Carney, so we will be able to have some of the folks coming through town, making purchases, help us pay for this, this tax. The thing that I think is important is that the sales tax will not apply to utilities, gasoline, or prescription drug purchases. That's really important for our local residents, I think, to know that. And it does have a sunset clause on it, of 20 years, I believe, 25 years, I'm sorry. And so we'll have to reapply at that point, so that's not, it's not never-ending, it'll have to be reapplied.
Thank you for that report, after a very detailed report last meeting, which was wonderful, by the way. Does anybody on the board have any questions for Chief Thomas or staff on the proposed ordinance?
This is, I assume, very similar to what the fire department did last fall, as far as the sales tax and...
Yes, sir.
The day of the ballot.
Yes, sir.
Is this marketing, okay, is this, who's marketing this? The police department, the city, or, how are you, how are we marketing this to get people edu, I guess not marketing, but educate?
As best we can, I guess is the answer. We're still in the formative stages of that, and we're going to get a committee together as far as helping to present a lot of the facts to the public. My intention is to get out in the public and do some educating as well, so I'm, I'm open for talks to whatever club would like to give me a call, I'll, I'll be glad to, to sit down and chat with them about it, and let everybody know if they have questions, that's what we're here for. So I want to have some, maybe a coffee with the chief and a couple places, and have a little coffee and discuss the education side of it. So if we're, we want to get everybody, if they have any questions, reach out to us and, but we'll have some public comments as well, so.
How much does this going to increase the budget?
Well, it's a good question. It won't start for a time. Before, like I said, it's October of 2025 that will start, and then it'll have to be accumulated over a period of time. We're hoping for the best. If it's a half-cent sales tax, having talked to the fire department, they were looking at around $900,000, I believe, and, per year. And the nice thing about that is that it's dedicated specifically to public safety. The fire department has theirs already, and with them being, it's my understanding, with them being their own entity, the public safety aspect of that is with the police department. And so, you know, we, other age, other jurisdictions, whenever they pass a public safety sales tax, it's split between the fire department and the police department, but since we're different entities, we, this will come for us. And the other nice part about it is, our regular budget cannot be adjusted because of that, so by statute, the money that we get is in addition to our budget. And so that's, you're not going to rob from Peter to pay Paul in that respect, so it's going to help the city in general, as well as the police department. We're pretty excited about the opportunity, so.
I would be.
We are.
I think it's really important that your committee makes sure that the public understands that this is not a property tax, this is a sales tax, and that not only residents but non-residents are going to be paying the sales tax, so the burden's not just on our residents, it's, it's, you know, when you've got Starbuck Tratt on the highway, you know, you've got people coming off the highway that are going to pay this tax too, so. I think that's very important that we, we get that educated to the public, so.
Chief, you, once again, Chief, you did a, provided an excellent report. Last meeting, you, I think, put forth a very nice presentation that spelled out very clearly the need for additional funding for the men and women of our police department, and, you know, services aren't free, and, but what a good opportunity for our community to once again support our men and women of law enforcement here in Carney, and a great opportunity for us to provide you the tools necessary to do your job. So I don't have any questions. Once again, appreciate the report. If there's no other questions from the board, if we could read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri imposing a sales tax for the purpose of improving public safety at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to section 94.903 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri, providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Carney, Missouri for their approval at the April 8, 2025 general municipal election, designating the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election.
Move to approve on first reading.
Second.
All in favor? Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the City of Carney, Missouri imposing a sales tax for the purpose of improving public safety at the rate of one-half of 1% pursuant to section 94.903 of the revised statutes of the state of Missouri, providing for submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the City of Carney, Missouri for their approval at the April 8, 2025 general municipal election, designating the form of ballot and directing the city clerk to provide notice of said election.
Make a motion to move on second.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Votes unanimous, ordinance passes on the second reading. Congratulations, Chief. Now, time to get to work?
I'm on it.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to resolutions, first res, I guess, the only resolution, not first. We have one resolution this evening, a motion approving resolution 5, 2025, presented by Shelley Daniel, our Public Works Director. A resolution approving the addendum to the contract for the new elevated 1 million gallon storage tank between the City of Carney, Missouri and Caldwell Tanks. Shelley?
Thank you, Mayor and Aldermen. Just wanted to provide an update on the water tower project, and also entertain this and resolution. The city did issue the notice received to Caldwell Tank back on July 1st, 2024, for the construction of the new water tower. Due to longer material lead times, the bulk of the concrete work would occur in under 100 months. To ensure the highest quality construction, it was decided to delay the concrete work and wait until the spring to do that work, and at the same time negotiate a new completion date. The new project schedules have the tank in service by December 1st, 2025, which is what we've been communicating to the board and the public that the project would be done in December of '25. of twenty five. And the final completion date will now be April twenty ninth, twenty six. This will allow Caldwell Tank to remove the old water tower in the spring of the following year. This change also resulted in some cost savings to the original contract for not having to do winter concrete work. But the biggest gain for us is to ensure the quality of work and not having premature cracking in the new work at kind of in a risky time of year. I do recommend the approval of this resolution to document the new contract completion dates through change order number one.
So Shelley, to be clear, the proposed changes, which should give us a better quality concrete foundation with the piping change order, we're still going to, it's still a budget credit of roughly four thousand one hundred some dollars?
Correct. Now, we also, there was some work that our water department wanted to include in the original contract that not here at the time, it didn't make the contract. So we were able to get that added with the thirty thousand dollars overall savings and got that already included in the, which will help them maintain the new towers.
Well, you've set a pretty high standard here. So your, your peers on, on, on our management team just know now when you bring the board a resolution, we want to see a budget credit, not that it's going to cost you. So good job there.
Sorry, I couldn't.
Thank you for that report. Any questions from the board on the proposed resolution? See none. If we can entertain a motion approving resolution five, two thousand and twenty five, approving the addendum to the contract for the new elevated one million gallon storage tank between the city of Carney, Missouri and Caldwell Tanks, which will result in a budget credit of four thousand one fifty-four sixty-seven.
Motion to approve.
Move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Resolution passes. We'll move on to items for review and presentation. First up is our December monthly financial report presented by our finance director, Stephanie Harris. Stephanie?
Again, you are looking at, this is in section eight, the financial statements for the nine months ending December thirty first, two thousand and twenty four. We are three fourth seventy-five percent of the way to our fiscal year on the downhill. So everything, again, the, as I look through it, the comparison to budget pages, the only thing that still stands out to me is taxes. And I can tell you that we have already received a very large payment in January. So you will see a difference next month. And that number, it will not look so low as to be thirty-six percent of our anticipated revenue. Other than that, on the expense side, there's nothing concerning in comparison to budget. And a lot of the revenues are over budget. I just thought I would share a little more since I didn't have much to say on that. Go to page eighty-one. That's where you start the nine months comparison between last year's December thirty first financials and this year's December thirty first financials. And I just think it's really interesting, especially as we are nine months through the year, to, especially from the revenue side, looking at, you know, each fund and where they were last year compared to where they are this year. And in most cases, you will see that there's growth in almost everywhere. So I thought, I just thought that was interesting. Again, we don't talk about these other components of the financials that I provide, but I thought it would be a good time to just point that out as a tool for you guys as you look through your financial review. And if you have any questions, always think of them later, call me.
I appreciate the report. City continues to grow. We can't do more with less. And when you look at our increased expenditures, it's in places like the police department, public works, Capitol Alley, right? I mean, we've, we've done a lot of, when you look at the projects we've completed and all the things we've accomplished in our fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five budget, we've done quite a bit and a lot to be proud of. So not surprised by that at all. Any other questions, comments from the board?
So what's the, the underrevenues on page eighty-one? The intergovernmental, there's a, like a sixty-five thousand dollar difference between this year and last year? What is that?
Unfortunately, I'm guessing that intergovernmental had a big adjustment at the end of last year. But intergovernmental in general is transfers that the general fund makes out to other fund?
It's, it's grant revenues. And so we received additional grants.
Oh, grant, interfund transfer, sorry. Yeah, intergovernmental grants that we received from other agencies. So so far this year, we've received a couple, but there's more coming.
Good. Thank you.
Yeah, so it sticks out, but it's a good stick out. Yeah, we've received sixty-five grand more and grant staff spending more time looking for grant opportunities. I will say, the right grant opportunities, you know, sometimes grants have all the strings and requirements attached to them, you know, if you take their money. But, yeah. Any other questions? Appreciate the question, David.
Yeah.
All right?
Fines are related to court. And they, we went to e-ticketing, which has increased our court activity and our fines related to court activity. So it has, it has increased significantly, well, in case load and in.
The board, have any other questions there? We good? Yeah. Thank you for that report. Next item for items for review and presentation is a chapter four hundred and five zoning regulations of the code of ordinances of city Carney, Missouri, presented by David Pavlich, our community development director. As we know, we had in public hearing this evening with no public comments. You have the floor. And David, after you, if I could offer up our planning and zoning liaison to offer a comment as well. Thank you.
Yeah, so in your packet, there's a draft zoning code ordinance, which is born, I would say, from the board's discussions and the board priorities and initiatives. So in your, this year's priorities and initiatives, some of the bullet points related housing and commercial industrial development include decreasing minimum lot size requirements for housing types and identify areas for high-density housing, identify possible economic development incentives to encourage new commercial retail businesses, including in the downtown area, utilize economic development incentives to attract manufacturing office and light industrial development, and update the city's future language map and consider overlay districts as areas in the city where future commercial retail development should occur. So this ordinance that has been prepared, and again, it's in draft form, it was presented to our planning zoning commission last week. They did not pass it. They did have a couple of questions. They wanted us to look at maybe another way to increase some residential density. And they wanted us to look at the impervious surface areas that we allow and maybe adjust the numbers a little bit. The intent tonight was not to approve it, though it was just for presentation. And then at the meeting next month is when we would hope that you'd approve that. By that time, maybe we will have a recommendation from planning zoning commission. So key, key things out of the proposed ordinance is reducing the minimum lot size in our R one district from seventy-five hundred square feet to six thousand square feet. That's something that the board has said that they wanted to see. Also, we increased the residential densities of all of our zoning districts. So in our R one district, currently we allow up to five units per acre. We propose to increase that to eight dwelling units per acre. That allows some cluster development. So if somebody, if a developer has a property that maybe has an area of trees, undeveloped area, or an area that we'd like to preserve or that they'd like to preserve, they can cluster that housing, get a little extra density bonus as a result of that. We kind of factor that in all of those zoning districts that we have. So in our R two, we propose to increase residential density from nine dwelling units to ten dwelling units per acre, so up to increase it ten percent. And then in our median density, high-density residential, we increase that even more. In the commercial office, neighborhood commercial, general commercial districts, and the industrial districts, we try to add a little bit of flexibility where some of the commercial uses might be allowed in industrial in some form. Same with a few of our light industrial classifications, we allow additional use in commercial. You might have a business park that a light industrial building would fit just fine in. We want to have that flexibility to allow that. Even that kind of complies with the board's priorities. Where you, where you want us to identify economic development incentives, well, a way to do that through zoning is to try and get that flexibility among some of the zoning districts. So that kind of are open to some of that development. We also, in some of those commercial districts, introduce some high-density residential that's also allowed. It's good to have an apartment complex in amongst a commercial area. People can walk downstairs, walk across the street, go have dinner, walk back home. If everything is closed, pedestrian friendly, it's generally good for the community. Mixed use is kind of what we look for, what a lot of communities look for. This ordinance also creates the downtown overlay district. So in our downtown area, along Jesse James, not Jesse James, Jefferson Street, Fourth Street up north to about the Dollar General, and then from Grove Street West to the railroad tracks, we allow higher-density residential. It promotes commercial development. And it could be something over time really changes the outlook of downtown. We may see a lot more density. Again, very far down the road is not going to happen tomorrow. I'm kind of thinking about maybe Gladstone, the process they went through where they had a downtown, but not much of a downtown. And they put together some incentives and now they have a downtown. They have some mixed use there. They have new buildings, new community center and things like that. And maybe we can see a transformation like that over time. Going through the ordinance, we also have modified definitions because we reduced a few new land uses or maybe some small edits to some existing zoning classifications. And we have the good land use table because of the changes we've made in zoning districts. And then on the parking side, parking is, it's in the planning realm, parking is always kind of an issue because you require a certain amount of parking, but it's generally those busy times of the year. So you see like, for example, with Price Chopper, most of the time, the parking lot is only a third to a half full. There's a lot of overflow parking. That's not needed. It would make a lot more sense if there was maybe a new shop in that area that is just sitting there being pavement, you know, year, year after year. And so we, we try to reduce, I think, some of our parking requirements, especially in the resident heights, high-density residential, we require two parking spaces for a dwelling unit. We propose to reduce that down to one and a half per dwelling unit. A project can always propose more. We set established minimum requirement, but we're trying to be a little more cautious of requiring too much parking. A lot of communities are looking at that parking requirements.
David, I think, so in our annual strategic planning session, our consultant, we've all used the word affordable housing forever. And she's like, no, nothing. What is affordable? Because what's affordable to you could be different for you. And what is it attainable housing? Is that what the word she used? I look at all of this and I, cost of everything are going to continue to increase, labor, materials. And it, I think, a lot of this does allow attainable, more attainable commercial residential development. I've got a couple asks for you, quick updates. I'm sure you could probably do quickly in your head. But like, you know, just, may seem a little nitpicky, but it's going to be, I think, a little more transparent. So like on page eighty-five, under R one, low density, then just for an example, you mentioned what the current maximum density is, what it was and what it's changing to. But for example, on page eighty-six, under R three, for commercial office C one, you just have what you want to reduce the maximum lot size to and stuff. Could you maybe clean it up a little bit and add what it currently is to kind of show the whole picture?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
We can do that. Now, those are commercial lots. Four thousand square feet is probably pretty small when you're dealing with a multifamily or a commercial project. I think ours is eight or ten thousand square feet. But yeah, we, we can do that, show that conversely.
Like for R three, it shows, we propose to decrease it to four thousand. R four, same with C O, C one, but it doesn't spell out kind of what the current requirement is. And then, so my only experience with, and I'm just going to, this is just a question I have as far as for the reduction of the multifamily from two spaces to one and a half per unit. I, I get a little nervous there, to be honest. And this is my example why is, so my brother and sister-in-law, when they first got married, they lived, when they were brand new, when Rob Washington built the townhome multifamily development off Form fifty-two in Brighton, very nice townhomes. They were one of the first on the block. Quickly, we realized that nobody in those, there are four townhomes to a building. They all had one-car garages, enough space to park two cars in the driveway. Nobody parked their car in the garage. They stored stuff in it. So anytime they'd have company, anytime there was family dinners, it was hell to get in and out of their house any given day. So I'm just curious about the recommendation to lower, to me, I, I can re, I understand the staff's recommendation to lower on retail when you see, you know, maybe three times a year is their parking lot used to capacity. My fear is, is most apartments and stuff, those, their parking is used at a capacity every day. And I'm just afraid it's going to create a lot of issues on our streets. People park in our streets, causing issues for fire response, police response, cause issues for school buses, just, just all the stuff, right? So I did not watch the planning and zoning commission meeting to be transparent, honest. So that may have been covered in your meeting. And if it was, I'm sorry. But that's just a, something if you can be prepared to maybe address again in a couple of weeks. I'll, I'll have that same question if that recommendation is there.
Can I jump on that, David? Something else that we need to mind, if we're going to make these smaller, more high-density, I think we also need to look at widening our street requirements because you are going to have more people parking on the streets. And you get a car on both sides of the street, it's going to get tight. So instead of having, what is it, a twenty-two foot, maybe we need to go to twenty-six, twenty-eight through that area because when we get that more density, we are going to have more people parking in the street.
I, I hear what you're saying. My fear there is what's going to be more attainable, right, for the builder, right? I, I want attainable projects in our community, but I also don't want it to be attainable at the cost of taxpayers.
Yeah, but you get a fire truck down there and you get cars on both sides trying to get through. It's a real problem.
I don't disagree.
My, my son, he lives in a multifamily area over there. And, I mean, sometimes it's like you can just barely get one car down because they got cars on both sides. I would hate to take a fire truck down that road. So I was thinking, so we can get our, our safety equipment and the ambulance and fire truck down. That needs to be a little wider. I, I hear what you're saying, Randy, but also I think there's some public safety to that.
Yeah, I don't disagree. What I was saying is, I, I, I try to walk in the shoes of our developers and I'm going to say, yeah, I'm only going to require, I'm going to save the cost of a half of a car in a driveway. But oh, by the way, to facilitate that, now we're going to need to add four foot on the street. What's the true cost of, you know, savings, if any?
Yeah.
Now, that, that parking production was just for your, like your apartment complexes, high-density residential, not doing that for the single-family dwelling unit.
Sure. Yeah.
Now, we also need to look at when we're, we're talking multi-use, okay? Like, I don't know if you've been over to like Top, Topgolf over there, they put in that, where they got residential, or Business Down Below and Apartments Up Top. If you go over there on a Friday, Saturday night to Third Street Social, you got a problem parking because people are living there. They've already taken up parking spaces for the restaurants. Same thing you got with Summit Grill and in Gladstone. So those are things we got to look at too. Because if you're living there and you leave, you go to the grocery store, you come back, all of a sudden your spot's taken because somebody's in a restaurant or something. because somebody's in a restaurant or something, you know? So we do have to look at that parking kind of seriously.
Any other questions for David before we let Kathy, our Park, our Planning and Zoning Liaison, share her thoughts, and anything from the meeting?
One thing I wanted to touch on, so you've got on here, add accessory dwelling units. This is something Carney's never had. And having worked for municipalities, a couple of them, that have accessory dwelling units, this actually compound, or makes the issues that we just talked about, can make it even worse. Because now, I can take a detached two-car garage, and if it's built right, I can have a two-bedroom apartment above that, that two-car garage, detached garage, and is this going to account for additional parking because of that ADU?
We, we add those as conditional uses, and so that would be a question that would come up out of that condition. For, not for the internal, so the internal would be...
Right.
You know, like, mom and...
Still, still going to create more parking.
For the external, yeah, for the external, yes. So you, there would be a conditional use permit requirement, and then in that, then you look at consideration for parking and how that affects the parking that's on that site.
Okay, so the other...
Does an extra parking space need to happen on that property? If that's the case, yeah, it can be required as part of that conditional use permit.
So the other thing that comes into play with these ADUs in both municipalities that I've worked for, that, that one of them didn't have them, and they brought them on board, and then they realized the issue. So you, you've got residential houses that a lot of times are, their water service and their sewer service is designed for a certain fixture units in that house. And now you're going to add bedrooms and fixture units in this ADU to a potential water or sewer laterals that are already at their max. Both municipalities that I've worked for, as part of an ADU, required separate water services and separate sewer connections for the ADUs. I would highly suggest that, that Carney doesn't go down the path of allowing an ADU to connect into the primary residence, if it's an external. Internal, yeah, you may still create problems. So, you know, the ADUs are, yeah, you can get more people in a concentrated location, but they, they can create problems. So I just, I just want to make sure that we, we are aware of what we're, a monster that we can create here. You get big houses over in acreage lots that have a big outbuilding, you can potentially have another family there. So...
Would you recommend, do you recommend that we add language to that for...
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Is that what you have, you, and there's, the last bullet point is, to clarify, the duplexes to be divided into separate ownership must have separate utility services to each unit?
Yeah, so a duplex typically is A building on A lot, and there are two families that live there.
Correct.
Sometimes people go through the process of, you know, that someone will sell off one side of it, or whatever. What we're saying is, through a city process, you can go through that and actually subdivide it, so that you're purchasing half the, half of the duplex, but in that scenario, you've got to have a separate water and sewer service to both of those units. Sometimes duplexes are built with one service, because it's, it's one owner, one owner owns the lot, owns the building, and they run out the two units. Sometimes they'll have only one service, and it branches off.
That's an accounting nightmare, that gives me a headache even thinking about it.
So, yeah.
It can be, yeah. Yeah, because then you create, they're already separate areas.
Where a guy did that, and he built it as one unit, then he decided he wanted to sell half of it, well, then he had to get illegal. Well, the problem is that the sewer, this side went across the land where the other side is, where they did the legal, so it ended up being a whole big mess, so I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
So having, having that language in there, that's clarification to people about potentially subdivision, if they want to do that.
So the other thing, you and I talked about this last week, on R1, R1, so we've got existing subdivisions that have bigger lots, and, and now we're allowing smaller lots, okay, for new subdivisions or whatever. Has anybody talked about creating an R1A and an R1B, instead of bunching it all under R1? R1A would be the larger-sized lots, R1B would be the smaller, higher-density residential lots.
You mentioned that.
I did, and that's why I didn't see it, so...
Well, you mentioned after we drafted it, you know, started...
Okay, okay. I just think it cleans it up, because then you have, you know that, okay, so this, this subdivision, it's all zoned R1B. They're smaller lots, and, in my experience with zoning and, you know, building codes, it cleans it up, it makes it easier throughout the process.
David, could you, for, for my sake, could you, I tell you what, you and I will have an offline conversation, just to kind of educate me...
You want an example?
Well, yeah, because, let's say, I'm just going to use it for example, Meadows or Greenfield, right? Moving dirt on their eighth phase, right? And there's, I think, in that development, there could be an R1, there's obviously a R1A area, there's a R1B area, so...
Absolutely, there is.
Spell out the advantages and why that's important.
So, the, the advantage is, so when you've got the smaller lots, the, what is it, Villas of Greenfield, those, and that may not actually be a, because some of those are actually fourplexes, they're to one big structure, I think they're fourplexes.
With the North End?
Yeah, yeah. So, but I think those are all zoned one, or one-platted property, if I remember right. Prime example, if you've ever been into North Kansas City, you go east of I-35, all of those are going to be R1A, they're normal, bigger lots. R1B is what we call the avenues. So basically, east of, no, I got that backwards, west of I-35 is the R1Bs, east of I-35 is the R1As. So east of, they're smaller lots, they're more dense, they're, some of them don't have driveways, some of them, it's all parking on the street. So there's very stark differences between, you know, R1A, you've got to have off-street parking for, in, in, let's say, you had to have off-street parking for four vehicles. In R1B, there's no off-street parking requirement. So it separates out and allows for more, a higher-density R1 district, so...
Understand that. Here, the, what's being presented for us, just review, right, you're not asking for it tonight, I understand that, but these ADUs are conditional uses, right? So there'll be a review on each and every single consideration, which would allow staff to add other requirements that they deem necessary.
On the external, yes.
On the external piece, yes.
Correct.
Okay, question for you, not, sorry to put you on the spot. So we're in the process of already updating our future lane use map and stuff, right? What, what would, any change that the board would possibly make on that due to that process?
The Planning and Zoning Commission actually approved the future lane use map on last Monday night, and so that's done, the future lane use map doesn't come to the, to this governing body. So I don't think that it would, R1 would be R1, right?
Yes, right, yeah, the future lane use map identifies low-density residential areas or single-family, so the discussion really doesn't, won't affect that map. The proposed ordinance, the proposed ordinance is written as a way to help us maybe align with the future land use map.
Please, I don't, I ask that not to be correct, I'm trying to truly understand, if it is truly on the conditional use process, and staff and P&amp;Z and the board have to approve it, I'm, I'm trying to, just for me, understand, one, the benefit that David mentioned, and one, is it truly necessary, if we, you know, what, what's the better way to, to do this, right? To have it as a conditional use, and, and staff and our commission, our P&amp;Z commission and the board approve it, or do we give that authority and power to staff via ordinances that, that this body sets? So I guess is what I'm trying to figure out, and, and we don't have to make that decision Anything else from the board on David's report? Kathy, did you have anything else to add?
I would like to add a couple of things. David did a great job, all in all, Planning and Zoning was very, very positive on, on the report and the, the changes that they're proposing. There was some talk about actually reducing the size even greater of the lots, and also reducing the, the minimum building size, thinking specifically towards single-family homes, so small, small, not tiny homes, but smaller homes, for single people, for people who are downsizing after raising a family or whatever, so giving those opportunities, something, something else that we could look at. Talking about allowing the accessory dwellings, I think got a lot of positive feedback from, from the board. We didn't talk, to be honest, we didn't talk a lot about the parking. What David talks about in reducing the number of parking for retail and commercial makes a lot of sense. I do agree, and I think Planning and Zoning would agree, that it's a little, a little if-year on the, on the residential side, so, but all in all, we were, we were pretty pleased with what staff has put together. We just asked them to take kind of a look and see if we could go a little smaller to allow some, some, recognizing that, that housing needs and wants are different for lots of people, and so trying to give as many opportunities as we can to everybody to move to our community.
Thank you. David, thank you for the great report and, and time spent thus far. Any other questions from the board on the presentation? All right, thanks, Pat. We'll move on to, I'm sorry, we have one other item, and it's an important item this evening. I was about to move on to the mayor's communication. We do have the fiscal year 2026 budget summary, which will be presented by our city administrator, Sheila Ernst.
I actually recorded that, and Ryan's going to play it for us, but just so you know, you all have at the DAS, the actual document, the next meeting that we have will go through an in-depth presentation. But, so you have a couple of weeks, please don't hesitate when you go through that to give me questions, because then I can incorporate them, the answers and the information. If you have the question, probably a lot of people have the question, and we can get those incorporated in the presentation for next week. Maybe you won't think of anything while you're going through it, but maybe something I say next, at our next meeting, we'll jog something, and that is perfect to interrupt me and ask questions. That, me and you, will not be recorded, but this one is.
It is my pleasure to present a summary of Carney's proposed budget for the fiscal year ending March 31st, 2026. This budget was developed to support the priorities and initiatives established by the mayor and Board of Aldermen, while ensuring financial responsibility and sustainable growth. Through strategic investments in infrastructure, public safety, parks, and our employees, this budget reflects the city's vision of making Carney a thriving, sustainable, and desirable community. State law requires the city's budget to be a balanced budget. In addition to meeting legal requirements, the budget aligns with the mayor and Board of Aldermen's strategic priorities and fiscal year 2026 key initiatives for the city. This budget was created through a group effort involving every level of our team to achieve the city's priorities and fiscal year 2026 initiatives that were adopted by the Board of Aldermen and approved by the mayor on December 2nd, 2024. Those priorities represent the governing body's commitment to providing high-quality services that meet the needs of all citizens and foster a vibrant community, while also focusing on the city's infrastructure, available housing choices, commercial and retail opportunities, and the quality of life in our community. The adoption of the annual budget is the Board of Aldermen's most significant responsibility. The city's budget serves as both a financial blueprint and a policy guide for the upcoming fiscal year. Its impact extends beyond current operations, it shapes the services provided to citizens today, and influences the city's future path. Developing the city's annual budget is a complex and thoughtful process, and includes many important decisions. It begins with assessing available resources and allocating them to meet the diverse needs of our community. Essential services and debt obligations, including principal and interest payments on outstanding debt, receive top funding priority. In spite of careful planning, budget decisions remain challenging due to finite resources. The budget preparation involved close collaboration between department directors, the city administrator, and the mayor. Each department's operating and capital budget was rigorously analyzed and discussed during departmental budget meetings. This collaborative approach ensured that the final budget reflects the collective input of city leadership. This careful review process aimed to maximize the impact of available resources, while also addressing the city's fiscal year 2026 priorities. Attracting and retaining skilled, experienced, and high-performing employees continues to be a top priority for the city of Carney. This budget supports the city's commitment to delivering efficient services by increasing funding for employee training, professional development, and essential resources. The city follows a structured approach to budget and compensation decisions, considering factors such as merit, qualifications, experience... factors such as merit, qualifications, experience, and market rates paid by other local governments in the area. In response to today's competitive labor market, the proposed budget includes great adjustments for many positions to align with prevailing market conditions. These adjustments ensure fairness and consistency in how the city manages compensation while keeping salaries competitive to attract and retain qualified and experienced employees. Additionally, a one-step merit increase is proposed for eligible employees on their anniversary date to reward performance and support retention. This merit-based approach reflects the city's commitment to fostering a culture of continuous improvement and being an employer of choice. This budget proposal includes funding for two new full-time positions dedicated to human resources and communications to fulfill one of the mayor and Board of Aldermen's initiatives for this year. The communication specialist will improve resident engagement and enhance the city's ability to deliver timely and transparent information across multiple platforms, including social media and the city website. The HR manager will be responsible for strengthening employee engagement, recruitment, and workforce development efforts, helping Carney continue building a competitive, high-performing team. This budget prioritizes ongoing progress on key capital projects that advance through design and engineering last fiscal year while also funding new projects to maintain and expand critical infrastructure to meet the evolving needs of our community. These investments will enhance the quality of life for residents and support Carney's future growth. The city is dedicated to implementing asset management plans for water, sewer, and streets, following master plan recommendations, improving pedestrian safety, and partnering with community organizations to maximize the use of our parks. This year's sidewalk and trail improvements include funding for the construction of the Mac Porter Park Connector Shared Use Path and funding for construction, planning, and design for the used taxed pathways, pedestrian crossings, sidewalks, and trail connections. The Connected Carney Plan will also be completed this fiscal year, and the budget includes some funding for the planning and design of a trail reconstruction project. This year's budget proposal includes funding to continue designing both the 19th Street Complete Street Project and the Nation Road Complete Street Project, as well as funds to continue planning for intersection improvements at State Route 33 and Meadow Brook Drive. Funding for the construction of the Million Gallon I-35 Water Tower and the replacement and upgrade of the South Clark Water Line are included in this proposed budget, as well as funding to extend a water line down Nation Road and to replace and improve water line within the Carney-Westside Community Improvement District boundary. This budget includes funding for the planning and design of two critical wastewater projects for our city. One, to reduce stormwater inflow and infiltration into our sanitary sewer system, and the second, to continue planning and designing an expansion of our wastewater treatment plant, which will allow us to get the necessary approvals from DNR to move this important project forward. Funding to construct Hall Park is included in the budget, as well as funds to purchase additional skate park ramps, equipment for movies in the park, riprap at Lions Park, and to replace the web climber and merry-go-round at Jesse James Park. There is also funding to update the bathroom doors at Mac Porter Park. Additionally, funding has been made available to complete the Water, Wastewater, and Stormwater Integrated Management Plan and to prepare a utility rate study, as well as to make necessary exterior improvements to the Historical Museum Building and to make improvements to City Hall, including ADA updates, building security enhancements, and adding an exclusive public meeting space. Finally, funds are available to replace the Southbrook Drive culvert and to make repairs and stormwater improvements related to the Shopset Carney development. The proposed budget anticipates $4.5 million in debt proceeds to fund critical capital projects and $31.9 million in revenues, an increase of $8.4 million compared to the prior year. This revenue growth is primarily due to the city's success in securing almost $8 million in federal grants for transportation and safety projects. Additionally, charges for services are projected to increase, reflecting the increased cost of providing those services. I want to wrap up by offering my sincere appreciation to the dedication and hard work of city staff and Mayor Pogue in preparing this proposed budget. Their collaborative efforts and commitment to thoughtful planning have been invaluable in developing a budget that supports Carney's priorities and ensures continued delivery of high-quality services to our community. At the Monday, February 3rd meeting, we will go through the fiscal year 2026 proposed budget in depth. Thank you.
Great report, Sheila. Thank you to yourself and all of our department heads. We've spent a lot of time, as we always do, getting to this point. It's truly exciting that in a few weeks, we're going to turn this budget page to page and go through all the fine details. Probably one of the most important, if not the most important, job we can do as a board is pass this tool that will be our map for the next fiscal year. So I'm proud of the effort, Sheila, our department heads have put in. I've spent a lot of time myself here with you guys getting to this point. I'm really excited about the budget and look forward to more talks. Thank you for that report. Do you have anything else to add to that? All right, we'll move on to mayor's communications. Only thing I have this evening is, before our meeting, I met with a group of department heads and department leaders. We started a book club here at the city. Every employee had the opportunity to be involved in this volunteer book club. We're reading Radical Candor by Miss Kim Scott. Like I said, we had our first meeting today, we reviewed chapters one and two. It was a really cool experience for me to get the opportunity to be on the same levels as department heads. We're throwing all kinds of different experiences and ideas and I think Eric or Stephanie made a comment about, wow, so many different personalities just in this group and the department heads and leaders ourself. And you're never too old or too young to learn something new, so I'm looking forward to this experience. And thank you to everybody who is volunteering your time to read and learn and to share and grow with the rest of us. I think it's a cool thing and I'm excited to learn and grow with you guys, so thank you for that. We'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Just a reminder that our next board meeting will be February 3rd, where we will take an in-depth dive into this budget.
We'll move on to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Berger.
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the presentation that we had this evening from the high school students. I'm very impressed with their ideas and with their ability to stand up in front of a room full of people and not die of embarrassment and to give a wonderful presentation. I hope that as we move forward, and maybe we can find the money in the budget to input some of, or to put into play some of their ideas. I love the arboretum out there. I stop often when I was walking, it's too cold now to walk, but when I was walking to read the signs about the trees and things like that. We have this beautiful jewel in our park system and I think that that just enhances it more and brings more people to our community, so congratulations to them.
Laney and Sue and our park staff have done a wonderful job out there. Yeah, I'm excited to see where that goes as well, and I'm sure finding the funding, if that means some of our local banks and partners may have to give up some money. I know for sure Vermore Bank would be happy to stroke a check to help out there, so good message.
On the record.
Alderman Lehman?
I'd just like to piggyback off of Alderman Berger's comments. I knew this was coming from being on the park board. We had talked about it two months ago, I guess, since we didn't have one in December. Quite honestly, I wasn't expecting the caliber of project that they did. And it was very impressive to be able to real-time scan a QR code and see what they've already done. And so the minds of our younger people is truly at work here, and I think that's great. So hopefully we can take this to the next step, so.
I love that program that Mrs. Stacy Holtz Law organizes, and so many of the projects they do are truly giving back to the community. And it just, I don't know, I enjoy seeing our future leaders, the future of our community, already thinking about ways to improve their community and give back. It's very cool. Alderman Holt?
I agree. I thought the kids did a great job, but I want to comment on our trash. My trash got picked up on time.
I think I'm like third week in a row or something, so.
My trash cans were not destroyed. No, I'm very impressed with the service so far. My neighbor came and we were joking about it, and he too was like, wow, it's a big difference. Because sometimes we would, it'd be after dinner before they ever picked up some stuff. We've got it where it gets left. So far, everything's been picked up. We come up from work, it's all done, ready to go, and I think the beginning of this relationship looks pretty promising, and I just wanted to share that with you.
Alderman King?
Well, being last, I don't get to say a lot, so. But I would like to say, everyone had really high comments about snow removal, so the city did an amazing job with all that. And of course, the presentation was too good not to say something, so it was really neat.
All right, that concludes all the items on our agenda this evening. So with that, if we can consider a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
Sub moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Thank you for being here, and everybody have a good night.